Good evening, everyone. My name is Mike Payne. I'll call together the regular planning meeting for March 26, 2013. I'm getting different times here, so I don't know if my update on my phone was right or wrong, but we'll get the meeting going. I'd like to start out the meeting by thanking Simsbury Community Television for taping this meeting, so citizens can know what's going on. Thank you very much. We'll seat some alternates. We have two members not here, so Rich and Gary, if you guys could...
Sure.
Sure.
And first order of business, application 3002, which I believe we continued after our last meeting. Is that... Go ahead, Hyrum.
Correct, Mr. Chairman. I think that the commission, as I understand it, had a question of whether it was able to extend the subdivision, the Bruin subdivision. I think I sent you all the town attorney's comments on that. He also copied the whole statute, but basically his bottom line was on the second page of that opinion. It said the planning commission has the clear authority to consider an act on the application for extension to complete all work within a subdivision. And the authority does not depend on a local regulation. So I think that is just a question that was raised that came with that. So the staff's recommendation is that the request for extension be granted unless there's some other issue that...
There was some question about the validity of the approval.
Right. I tell you, the legislature changed the rules of the game several times, and there were certain subdivisions that were approved for a certain period of time, then was extended, then they were extended even further. I know Howard made the comment last time, his feelings were that it was extended already for six years. Frankly, my position on these things is to be careful about those things. Maybe that's true. I'm not certain that I want to carefully interpret that for the state. I think that as you look through this, you'll find out that it's probably the case, but I think the request is not something that is going to make any difference one way or the other to the town. My suggestion would be, based on the request, it would allow the applicant to do something with the property, to finish either the improvements that are needed, or to sell the property, to market the property with the extensions granted. If this had something to do with a change in the plans, or something like that, I'd be much more careful about it, Bill, but I think that it's probably a reasonable request given the statutes that exist.
Did everyone understand that and agree with where we ended up?
So even if it was five years, the extension?
There's nothing that says that they can come in, that they can't come in at any time to ask for an extension. There's no provision in the statute from saying they can't come in after four and ask for another five-year extension. Commission has the ability to extend it for another five years should it so choose.
Before the expiration of the original approval?
Correct.
And what was the date of the original approval?
It was 2008, March of... Yesterday. So that's why I think that we probably need to say we agree with Howard's determination. I agree. The town attorney did not comment on that either, but if you wanted to extend it as requested, I think that would probably be the safe thing to do at this point.
Any other commission members have any questions for the town plan? Everyone comfortable going forward with this?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the application for extension of subdivision, application number 13-02.
Okay, we have a motion.
For a period of five years.
Okay, we have a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second. Some discussion, questions?
Is the five-year extension from March 2014?
I think, if you want, if you're comfortable with this, say the specific date, five years from today, something like that. That will set the end date certain in the motion, and then regardless of whether it was five years or six years before, then you'll have a specific end date. So five years from today would be appropriate.
Can we do it from yesterday? So there would be no gap?
Are we okay doing that? We're meeting today.
I think our intent was to approve the application in our previous meeting. It would have been well in advance of the expiration date.
Yeah, I can play too, that typically what happens is the commission, in order to avoid a subdivision, would have to make a motion to do that anyway, and so that hasn't happened clearly. So the fact is that it was yesterday. I don't think anyone's going to appeal this before 150 lots of them.
And we didn't have any comments from the public during the public hearing opposing the extension.
Okay. So will you take a friendly amendment to use the March 25 date?
Yeah, extended from March 25, 2013.
For five years.
For five years.
And the second, you'll set that in the...
It's the second.
Okay. So everyone's in agreement, making sure we got those details out of the way.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? extensions? The ayes have it. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you very much.
No problem. Hyrum, we have a zoning commission referral on the incentive housing overlay zone.
I think that everyone has a copy of this, if I recall correctly. If you didn't, I have other copies here. Any need copies? This is a story that started a while ago. The town applied for a grant back just about the same time we were doing this. Correct. And that grant had to do with what's called Home Connecticut, or the Incentive Housing Zone program. Just to give a very brief synopsis of what happened, there were initially the consulting firm that we worked with, Converse Square, did a survey of probably about 21 different parcels in town, taking a look at where it would be possible, of course, where feasible to locate incentive housing zone type developments. And for those of you that might wonder, incentive housing zones typically is legislation that was adopted by the legislature to provide for location of workforce housing, or affordable housing, that is, people that make a certain income level. The problem with the whole program came down to the fact that we were locating specific parcels when Converse Square was first working on the program, and people were uncomfortable with that. Certainly, the zoning commission was uncomfortable with that. That way the state legislation is structured, and Glenn Childs, the consultant for Plan Metrics, picked up where Converse Square left off, and he can answer some questions tonight too, hopefully to have some questions. The zoning commission was uncomfortable with the fact of pre-selecting parcels where these types of developments could occur. And what they felt more comfortable with was a regulation that would allow them the ability to look at any given application, to decide whether it's the right place for that zone to be located or not. Obviously, if it were a subdivision, it would come to this commission. If it's a site plan for a parcel that doesn't need to be subdivided, then it would go to the zoning commission. The way this process proceeded was that when Glenn got involved, Plan Metrics got involved and agreed to sort of pick up where Converse Square left off, we initially, zoning commission wanted to know what were other communities in the state doing, and what were they thinking in terms of how they were going about this. And so what Glenn did was put together a really good chart. Have you seen this or not? This is a chart that really lists all the activities that other towns have gone through. And this was a kind of a good indication for the zoning commission to take a look at and see which towns were interested in putting together a regulation that was specifically compliant with the incentive housing zone that the legislature passed, and other towns that had maybe been interested in the incentive housing zone, but wasn't necessarily interested in doing everything that the legislation required, that is, pre-selecting the sites, laning those zones, and simply making these uses as of right. That was the intention of legislation, and many communities were uncomfortable with that, sort of leap of faith that was involved with that process. So this was a really good chart that gave the commission something to look at a while ago. And so as you can see, there are some communities that have decided to go ahead and put together regulations that are compliant with that AHC, and others, many others, that are not. So that was one of the first things that the zoning commission looked at. One of the next things that the commission looked at was, well, what are we talking about in terms of the costs for these units, in terms of how much people would need to be able to make in order to live in one of those units? And we put together also, Glenn actually put together, a median family income chart. You've all had a copy of this, seen this. And this is very interesting as well. This is information that the zoning commission received, just to get an idea of which units in town, how they would be able to fill the people with these particular incomes.
Got it, well.
So it lists what the annual income level is. Eighty percent of annual mean income is adjusted for family size. Talks about one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom units. Monthly available, that's for housing, thirty percent, and it gives those numbers there, somewhere between $1,300 and $1,800 for these units. So we're not talking about Section 8 housing. We're talking about housing which people in the town would be able to hopefully afford if these developments were created. Talks about the monthly potential rent, and gives some other good information about how affordable these units would be. One of the other things that was very helpful to the commission as well, is Glenn put together this historic mortgage rate chart, and thought it was nothing else, either an interesting piece of information, just to copy that. And the reason that some of this information, while it may seem slightly outside, considering how effective design regulation might be, it is a really good background for the types of things that all the town committees, especially the zoning commission in this case, would be taking a look at to see how these units would be produced, how affordable they would be, and how likely it is that people would move into them once they were constructed. So that gives some very good information about where mortgage rates are. In some cases, at historic lows, certainly that's no great shock anyways. And then the last thing that was produced, paper was produced, was the actual regulation itself, and you all either have seen that or have a copy of that. What I would like to say too is that before the commission actually made a decision to go ahead with this regulation, it was important for them to hear how these developments, should they be adopted or approved, would be different from some in town that might have been created that had caused the town problems, whether they were affordable units that either weren't properly managed, or some people misinterpreted or misunderstood what their role was as tenants of these affordable developments. So they were concerned about how these would be managed in the long term, and they heard from a private management company, Maria Di Marco came in, Di Marco Management, and talked a little bit about how she runs her business, as she manages these things for many municipalities. David Fink from the Partnership for Strong Communities also came in and talked a little bit about why we need these in Simsbury specifically, felt it was very effective, and talked with the zoning commission about that. Some of you may have, if you watched this on SCTV, and heard those presentations, but I thought they were both very effective. And I think particularly noteworthy is the fact that when Ms. Di Marco talked, I think she allayed a lot of their fears about how these things would be managed and how they would be run, and I think that helped a great deal. What that then allowed us to do was to give Glenn the go-ahead, to put together this regulation, this comprehensive regulation, about the purpose of the zone, the nature of the zone, what the process would be for one of these things to be landed, and describing the districts, the sub-districts that can be put in place. I think it's very interesting to note that there are many different things that could happen under this zone. That is, a mixed-use zone could happen where there are specifically, the idea is to create housing for residents, obviously, but also with mixed uses as well. Talk about mixed housing, multifamily, townhouse, duplex, and single families as well. So it ranges really from... There are a number of things in the regulation that talk about the process. I think probably what's of most interest to many people is what the density is that this regulation would allow. And the density is there, talks about specifically how many units per acre to be allowed under particular types of density. And that was a concern that many people had initially. So the regulation is specifically structured to accommodate, make sure that there's adequate sewage, adequate water supply, all other utilities with site as well, for any of these densities that are approved. The regulation talks about up to six units per acre in some cases, up to 10, and up to 20 for other particular types of uses. So there's no requirement that it be a specific set number. The way the state legislation was constructed, if I recall it correctly, is that those were minimums rather than maximums. And so a minimum of six units, for example, for single-family dwellings, might be in a small lot subdivision, a minimum of 10 for townhouses, and a minimum of 20 for apartments or multifamily. And so many communities, as you see from this survey that was done, have decided not to go quite in that direction. And I think it's pretty reasonable to understand that while we think it's important that the town go in this direction, we're also very cognizant of the fact that too much density is not the good thing for anybody. And so we think the way the regulation is constructed now is a good way to go, and that's what our recommendation has been. So the zoning commission, all that said, has set a deadline date, and is anxious to hear from the planning commission about that. What I did too for you, and I actually put on your page today, was a series of items with regard to how the regulation complies with the plan of conservation and development. I assume that some of you had a chance to look at that. And talks about the housing chapter in the plan of conservation and development. You're certainly welcome to offer any comments you choose. Housing is on page 117 of the plan of conservation and development. And as I look through the plan of conservation and development, there were a number of things that sort of stuck out to me as important in the commission's consideration. One of the things was that the result of the lack, the result of the way the housing is developed in Simsbury has been a lack of diversity in the housing stock. And then it talks about, through the zoning regulations, they strictly segregate single-family residential from other uses, and few of these housing units are in walking distance of the commercial areas. That's on page 117. I went on later on to talk a little bit about the primary changes in the plan of conservation and development. Talks about enabling greater diversity in the housing stock, and the second one was to allow mixed-use developments that will bring residents closer to and within walking commercial areas. So both of those things that specifically, as far as we're concerned, fit into what this particular proposal is trying to do. There are a number of goals and objectives that also apply to the regulation. One goal, that is on page 119, talks about providing a range of housing choices that will meet the needs and preferences of Simsbury's residences of all ages and economic circumstances. So we thought that was an important, specific thing to point out as well. The policy number three, on page 121, talks about encouraging the availability of a range of housing types and sizes. Now, even though the densities that are cited on page 121 are not what's in the regulation, we think that there's enough offsetting information in the rest of the plan to accommodate for that. As I said before, it's up to sections, and up to 10, and up to 20 in certain situations. So we think that that's also applicable, given the context that we're proposing. Policy number four talks about, missed on 122, promoting housing programs and development efforts that directly benefit residents who have limited economic means and are limiting physical conditions, including first-time homebuyers, low-income individuals and families, and elderly handicapped persons. I want to be really clear here that all these units are not necessarily for low-income people. Only 20% of any of the projects that would be constructed under this particular regulation would be required to be set aside for what are called workforce housing folks. That is, their specific incomes are set by the statute, actually by the five regulations. So that's another activity where we think that policy applies clearly. And then policy five, which is also really important as far as this regulation is concerned, is encourage diverse housing patterns where public water and sewers are available. So we aren't suggesting that these things be created in the middle of some parcel land where there are no utilities available, which that would probably not be a good thing, given the densities that we're talking about. So they're toward commercial areas, perhaps toward the center of town, or outside the center of town, toward other villages, but in areas where there are specific water and sewer are available. And that's basically what the plan of conservation and development says. I drafted that in a letter for you. Basically says exactly what I just said. Yeah?
The area for the construction of this type of a community, as a builder like myself, would we look for a piece of land, commercial zone, which is normally a factory or not, right? Or retail? Those commercial pieces of land would be available to apply for one of these, for little housing?
The way that the commission wants to answer that, I can't...
Sure.
The way the regulation is currently constructed is that any parcel of land would be available for application under this zone, any parcel. Clearly, there are certain parcels which are going to fit in much better, so that would be up to, in the case of a subdivision, the planning commission to take a look at that, and look at those standards, or in the case of the zoning commission, take a look at whether that site plan was appropriate for that particular area. It's important to let you know too, that today, I got copies of a letter from the town attorney, and I want to be really, really clear about this as well, because the zoning commission had said, well, what does the town attorney think about this regulation going forward? And I'd like to just tell you quickly, it's a very brief letter, tell you quickly what he had to say. One is, he asked the question about eligible zones. Said the regulation does not specify the eligible underlying zones where the WHOZ overlay zone may be applied. It appears that the WHOZ zone may be applied to any zone, including those that don't currently allow residential uses, and that's in fact correct. That was one of the intents, to try to do that. There are certain applications, for example, in the middle of established residential neighborhoods, where it might not be appropriate. And we would tell that, staff would certainly tell somebody who came in to do that, that you don't think that's appropriate, it's not going to fly, it's a zone change, so the zoning commission's going to be involved, and that's a very high bar to achieve. So if it's an involuntary regulation, it's not going to fly from the beginning. But we do think it's important, and I talked to Glenn about this today, we do think it's important that all the zones be allowed to have this, should it be found to be appropriate. There might be some business zones that where it would be appropriate, there might be some industrial land where it might be appropriate, where nothing else is going to happen for a long, long time. And it might be in the middle of a residential area where a small amount of density might be appropriate, maybe a tariff, maybe some other particular locations. So that's one thing, and that's how we felt the town attorney's comment on that one. The second comment he had was on eligible parcels, and the fact is that the WHOZ zone does not specify a minimum or maximum lot size. It appears that any size lot is eligible for this overlay zone. There's no statutory regulatory requirement for a minimum or maximum lot size, and therefore the decision to permit the WHOZ overlay zone on any size parcel is a policy of choice for the commission. And this particular case is talking about the zoning commission, but so you understand as well, what he's saying, is that there could be a small parcel, and somebody might come in and apply for a particular number of units on that parcel. And it might be appropriate for that parcel, maybe an infill parcel, where it's totally appropriate. Or it may be a parcel that's too small for the number of units that are proposed, and in that case it would be inappropriate, and my estimation of zone change would not be approved. But the idea of the regulation was to apply, to allow the flexibility for somebody to come in, to apply for it on any particular sized parcel, and then make a determination later on as to whether that was acceptable or not. The third comment that Bob had was that the draft regulation allows the commission, to discretion, to modify any dimensional standard. And that's in a way similar to, you don't have dimensional standards that you can waive in your subdivision regulation, but you have the ability, with a two-thirds vote, to modify standards in subdivision regulations. It's essentially the same thing here, in that we felt that if there were a particular requirement that needed to be modified, that would have to be a subject of a special permit. The zoning commission would have to consider a special permit for that modification as well. So it's known upfront what that modification would be, and we would take a look at it under the requirements of the special permits as noted. The last one is that the review standards, WHOZ zone requires a zoning map amendment, a text amendment, and the issuance of a special permit. So that's a high bar. There's three things right there that are important and hard to get through sometimes. The draft regulation, however, does not reference any standards in the zoning regulations for consideration and approval of each of these required applications. And he suggests a cross-reference to Article VII, Section C, and Article V, Section J, with the existing regulations to inform applicants of the standards and criteria for considering these of the overlay map, the zone amendment, and special permit. And that's a valid requirement. We, I don't know if I missed it, I'm certainly not going to blame Glenn for it, because I certainly didn't catch that either. But I think that the link between our existing special permit standards and this regulation is an important one, and we both agree that that should be put in the regulation. With that, I'm really, whatever questions you might have, I'm happy to entertain them.
Would Dorset Crossing count as part of this? Just, I mean, just because they had special unit housing, correct?
Yeah, that's actually, was set up as a planned area development rather than IHZ.
Would it have been considered? I mean, since it's, does that meet the criteria?
Do you mean the specialty housing that they have?
Correct.
That 48-unit development really was for MS folks, and I don't think that really would have worked under this particular legislation. Twenty percent of those units would have had to be affordable, the other rest of it could have been market rate. The way that particular development's going forward is there's actually a special ordinance that the town has that allows the assessor to assess those units based upon their ability to provide income from the residents, which is probably substantially less than typical market rate. So there may be, you know, it could be that 80% of them could be affordable units, it could be 100% that are market rate units, I'm not sure how that's going to work.
Is that special care, or special need?
It is a special need.
It is a special need. So did that fall under the IHZ or...
No, not at all.
What would constitute a special need then?
Well, in that case, it's MS.
Right.
There's 40 units that are set aside for people with MS. Eight units are set aside for local people with other special needs, whether it's a traumatic brain injury, or some other injury, or some other affliction. This particular program is set up specifically for people with less than market rate incomes in order to be able to fit into the 20% of those units. So if you had 10 units, 20 of them would be, or eight would be market rate.
Hyrum, would there be a ceiling as well?
You really need to go through the chair. Why don't you let us do our presentation?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Private conversation. Hyrum, the one thought I have, one of the differences between the Dorset Crossing is that was actually a mixed use, that was both commercial and potentially residential. So that, this really wouldn't trigger that because of the commercial aspect. Is that correct, Hyrum?
That's right. The thing about the P A D is that there's no requirement there for any affordable units. And what this, the intent of this regulation is, is to provide for some affordable housing units. That's the intent of it.
Any other questions?
If a developer develops a property, who is the policeman on income levels and that kind of thing?
That's the reason I mentioned the private entity like Di Marco Consulting. There are a number of agencies around the state that would come in and do that professionally. On an annual basis, for example, they certify what the incomes are. Town doesn't have to be involved in it. We don't have to start looking at people's W2s, or their tax forms, tax returns. That's done by a professional firm, and that's what they do. They're protected because they are careful with how they handle the information. They're protected because they are careful with how they handle the information and it, and they're handled very carefully.
Right. And that would only be for the affordable housing units?
Yes.
That twenty percent.
And what would be the frequency of eligibility calculation?
Probably every time they turn over, probably every year. You think more than that one?
No, I think on rental, anytime the rent, I think it's an annual, before you can renew your lease, you have to demonstrate that you're still eligible, meet the requirements, the income limitations, if you will. If you've purchased the unit, it's really a resale restriction. So even if your income grows during the time you own the unit, well, good for you. When it comes time to sell it, you have to sell it at a price that meets the affordability limitation. So there's a review on resale. And it would be in your best interest if your income was growing, perhaps to move from that unit to a normal unit.
Oh, eighty percent of the people in the rest of the development would presumably have normal incomes.
They would, but they don't have the resale price restriction. Those twenty percent of the units, over time, it will not perhaps escalate at the rate that other housing units would. So again, it's an opportunity for people, but if your income permitted you to buy a unit without those restrictions, that might be a better, a more prudent financial decision for you.
Okay, any other questions?
I have a question maybe to understand clearly. When you have a, an application comes in from a developer, builder, on a site for this type of housing, how is it, is it determined after the town reviews what they want to build if that's going to be approved for commercial or residential, or when is that determined? Is it something that's predetermined based on the sites?
It's all upfront.
It's all upfront.
Right, that's correct. So the existing zoning would stay there, present time, and then somebody would come in and say, I'd like to land this IHZ zone, and there are, I mean, six different subtypes, subzones, six different subzones, sub-districts. And it would be, the determination at that time would be, and I would again encourage people to do an informal preliminary discussion with the commissions to decide whether it's a good idea or not, and find out what the plans were. The application then would set that all down, so you'd know specifically ahead of time what the proposal was. And if the zone did, were to land there, then that's what would go through the special permit process and the zoning processes. So you know upfront what the proposals would be. Because it's a special permit, and because it's a special, a zone change, there will be public hearings at those stages as well. That's one thing that the state statute did not really provide for, is that they, once the land was zoned for IHZ or this particular use, what the state would like to have seen happen is that the development come in and get a site plan only with no public hearing. And that really was not, was something a lot of community commissions wanted to have happen. So they would have to decide upfront, you know, exactly how it would all work.
Thank you.
With these restrictions on these properties, you know, the twenty percent, wouldn't that put us in the same situation that we were just in with restricted deed properties recently in town with other places? I mean, there was the whole issue with resale values and unable to sell properties, et cetera. It seems like we're just going down the same path.
Well, I think that was exactly the same question that the zoning commission had. And Glenn, we had, that's why we had DeMarco come in and talk about exactly how that would be handled, how to avoid that situation. These regulations are put together in such a way that there are no questions about exactly how it's going to be handled on the annual basis, who qualifies, who doesn't. And I don't really want to get into commenting, certainly publicly, about what was done incorrectly or whatever in the past. I can simply tell you that after that discussion with Maria, the commission felt very comfortable that it would be very tight, very professionally well-done, and that the income levels would be determined and made valid on an annual basis. So that was something that was really important to the commission as well. Absolutely. The last thing anybody wants to see is another situation where there's a bunch of excessive litigation involved. And I think that was a question that held the commission up for some time.
Does the management aspect, like a DeMarco organization, come along with the IHZ designation?
No, it doesn't. But what we would have to do if somebody came in with one, is ask them who is going to manage it for them, how it would be done, we'd know that ahead of time. And I would think that we certainly would have the ability, once one or two got established, to say, this is the firm that handles these, you will use those, and make that part of the approval, right in the approval. I think that's important, to make sure that that would happen that way.
Hiram, if we go to page three.
Of the red, right?
Of the red. Proposed possible regulation. It may actually, I can't remember having read it in there, but we could actually put something in there that part of their process has to be, that they have to be able to document how they're going to handle that, to be in compliance.
Number six there, the housing affordability plan, essentially, that's exactly what that we'll talk about.
Okay.
Exactly. Name and address of the proposed administrator, the deed restricted affordability, that's exactly what it is.
And the administrator part of their duties would be to do that, be it annual or, yeah?
I think number five also provides that there's a housing restriction acceptable to the town attorney. So the town attorney is going to make sure that there's a commitment, if you will, in the administration on both, so they, both those tied together.
Yeah. Command in two voices, that's good. And the commission that they mentioned here is actually the zoning commission, because Maria, as the planning commission, would only comment on a subdivision, and they'd just give an opinion on the potential zoning regulations.
I think that's correct.
I think that this commission, the zoning commission requested a process that gave them a significant amount of control over these types of developments. So that control comes through both the zone change process and then a special permit process, to make sure that what's proposed as part of the zone change is actually what's approved, if you will, as part of that process. And I think that those would be referred to this commission for the opportunity to provide comment, and along the way you would have, as they would have two bites at the application, you would also have two opportunities to comment at the application.
Any questions? Anybody else have any questions?
Just, what would be the difference between an owner-occupied dwelling and one that was rented? How would the owner of the rented unit, would they have income restrictions as well, or?
I'm not quite sure I'm understanding the nature of your question. In other words, if somebody purchased a unit meeting the income guidelines and then chose to rent it?
Or, no, okay, let's take that scenario first.
Generally prohibited.
Totally prohibited, okay.
Generally prohibited.
Okay.
This is again, where the town attorney gets involved, the affordability restrictions. It's meant to confer benefit to people who meet the income restrictions. So to use it as an investment property does not meet the fundamental objectives here, and that would be, as Hiram turns out, the management company would be responsible for making sure it was not happening.
So is it possible that one or more of the affordable, the ones that are identified as affordable, would be rentable or rented by someone?
Actually.
Sure. They're designated units in a project.
So who would own it?
Would be designated, well, it could be, it could be a corporation that might build it, but out of those units that were built, twenty percent of them would have to be designated as affordable. And only those units would, and those units would only be able to be inhabited by or owned by people that met the qualifications.
Actually, I'm not sure it says that. If you go to five C, a statement of whether the four little units will, at the time of initial occupancy, be rented or owner-occupied. And I think it, my comment on that is, shouldn't be just the initial occupancy, but going forward. But if our intent is, if someone owns them, although the, a not-for-profit corporation could, could own them and rent them out, I think to Bill's point, it's really, we don't want a, another property owner to own them and rent them out as rental property.
Correct. And I think that the intention here on this was to allow for a situation, these units over time, might be initially rental, but eventually become condominium thirty or forty, fifty years down the road, or might in fact go the other way. So that language was meant to allow for that. But I think again, it's the affordability plan which the applicant needs to submit, which would be reviewed by Hiram and the town attorney to make sure that these objectives are spelled out. As part of our work with the town, we also submitted a model housing affordability plan to the commission for their consideration. And so should an applicant come along, Hiram has actually something in the file that he could, he could say, this is a document which you might consider using as your model to give us the information back. So we think we've helped the town close that loop.
The way the regulation reads now, too, just so you know, that the statement, the term of the deed restriction as proposed in the regulation is thirty years. So that's how long those restrictions will last. We may be out of our economic doldrums by then.
Can only help.
But that's, so I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Would it be advisable to just add zoning in front of any reference to commission in here, where there's several areas where it's just commission, and then there's one or two that say zoning, so that's specific, that this is a zoning determined process?
Any other questions for Hiram or comments, thoughts?
We just skip, if none, I could just skim over what I had, was hopefully looking for. And the, I was hoping the commission would be able to agree with this, the following. The Simsbury, and this is really from what I just said about the planning development, so I won't read the whole thing, but just skim the highlights. The Simsbury lacks housing diversity as stated on page 117 of the Plan on Conservation Development. WHOZ draft regulation stated purpose is to create additional housing opportunities within Simsbury while promoting the appropriate development of Simsbury's historic town center and other areas of the community. Number two, although recent amendments to town center zoning, through the adoption of the town center code and the adoption of the planned area development regulation, most of the zoning regulations strictly segregate residential uses, they still do, into specific residential areas, on page 117 of the Plan on Conservation Development. I mentioned the two primary changes in the 2007 plan to enable greater diversity in the regulations, and also to allow mixed-use developments that will bring residents closer to commercial, within commercial areas. Fourth thing, the planning commission has incorporated on page 118, a number of recommendations applicable to this referral in the Plan of Conservation Development, creating mixed-use zoning districts that will allow residential uses within our buildings, including Simsbury Center, Terriffill, West Simsbury, West Street, and Wheaton. Committed residential uses to be the primary element in any future development or of scale. Emphasizing market affordable housing in new residential developments where the income and sale price restrictions and percentage of affordable units are determined locally rather than by the state or the feds. Number five, in addition to the 2007 Plan of Conservation Development, the following goal was stated in the plan, provide for a range of housing choices that meet the needs and preferences of Simsbury's residents of all ages and economic circumstances. That's page 119. Following policies are also directly applicable to this referral, and I mentioned those before, Policy Three on page 121, Policy Four on page 122, and Policy Five on 123. And finally, the planning commission, I hope, finds the above-goals, policies, objectives to be in keeping with the draft WHOZ, with, certainly with the recommendations for the changes in order. However, it should be noted that the proposal to increase housing density needs to be integrated with careful analysis of sewer and water capacities for any given site. Really important. In addition, certain aspects of design will also play a large role in determining the acceptability of any WHOZ proposal. So we think that design is really important, and because of that, Glenn has included some design suggestions in the back of the regulation. We're hoping that the zoning commission will adopt those as well. There are favorable designs and unfavorable designs for each of those areas, and we think those will be very helpful to people that might come in with housing developments, those specific types. So I'm hopeful with that, and if you have any other questions, I'd be interested, but hopefully the commission will be able to order, to issue a favorable recommendation to the zoning commission.
Before we get to that point, what I'd like to do is, I see that someone else in your absence, Ferg, I would like to ask, Rich, could you step down and let Ferg assume his full seat?
That'd be funny.
Okay.
Carry the ball.
I don't want your voice tussling later on, so. Any, probably should have a motion in a second to do this, then we can have some discussions. Can I have a motion to give a favorable recommendation? Maybe?
I'll make a motion to give a favorable recommendation for the workforce housing overlay zone regulation.
Okay, have a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Karen. Discussion, thoughts, questions? I think it's, personally, I think it's a good thing. I think having some diversity in stuff in town would be good. I could potentially see this as maybe working in with the PAD or in some fashion.
Very possible.
But without getting ahead of ourselves, it just gives us more flexibility, which I think is good.
There have been years of precedent with the current zoning regulations, and with the, you know, putting these overlays on top of underlying zones seems to me to be kind of undermining the existing zoning regulations.
I don't know that I'd say undermining, though. I think my view is, Glenn, please, you know, I mean, I think that what it does is it provides another alternative for things that the town has subsequently found desirable. For example, the town center code is a brand-new regulation that allowed for different types of development than the town had allowed for years. And I think it could be admitted that there's a certain energy that came out of that process, and a certain significant potential for reinvigorating the downtown. I think that's important. I think we've seen the PAD, which only has been in existence for a couple of years, but with the PAD development on West Street that came in essentially even just before that regulation was actually adopted, and the PAD that came in on Dorset Crossing, that those regulations have allowed some other flexibility that developers found desirable. I don't think any of the existing residential areas have been adversely affected by either of those regulations because they've been carefully applied by the commissions involved, this commission, zoning commission, design review, and conservation. So my view is that it provides flexibility because of a need that the town has. It has been stated, even in your Plan of Development, that there's a need for diversifying the housing stock that's available. And only twenty percent of whatever gets built is necessarily required to be workforce housing or affordable. So that's a really small number. We're still under the gun, if you will, of eight dash thirty G, which gave us Meadowwood. And although that hasn't started to be constructed yet, I'm not sure when it's going to start or if it will start, that was a position that I don't think any of us want to go through again. If a developer can come in, there's a couple here this evening that might tell you, the other, this is correct, and if the developer can come in and find out from the commissions that what they're proposing is in the regulations, and it's agreed to, and you feel pretty comfortable with it, and that's the way they're going to go. They're not going to file eight dash thirty G and go through eleven years of litigation. They just aren't going to do it. So if we can get something desirable out of it, and have the flexibility in the regulations to apply the right tool at the right location, that's what we're, that's what we're aiming for here. Provides another tool to do that, to give us that flexibility.
We've almost discussed about how a lot of young people can't afford to live in our town. This might be one, one way to get, you know, starters in here. And if I'm reading Glenn's chart right, would you be the first in the Farmington Valley with this? Anyone else?
Nobody else has done this in the Farmington Valley. Around the state, other communities have it in the Farmington Valley. Simsbury, what are they going to do, towns apply for grants?
No.
There's a new round of grants, applications are due, not Friday, this, next week in practice. So more towns are getting grants to go through this process, but Simsbury may be the only one in the Farmington Valley that's.
I think that the important to, it's important for people to understand that there's this whole series of steps that need to be gone throughout. The zone change is certainly one of them, and as I said, that's a high bar. The special permit process, that's a fairly significant bar as well. We will make the connections as recommended by the town attorney with our regulations, so those standards that we have with special permits would be met as well. But we felt strongly that those things should be included in the regulation, and the regulation should be available for people, so we provide at least a small amount of housing. We're still under, until we get ten percent of our housing in the quote "affordable" category, we're still under that eight dash thirty G gun. Now, it's, I guess it's undetermined. I don't know if I feel really comfortable saying that we would be out of the spotlight of an eight dash thirty G application if we adopted this, but it certainly helped a great deal if we didn't have developers that wanted to come in and build an eight dash thirty G development and say, we don't care about your regulations, we don't care about designing, we don't care about anything in your regulations, this is what you're going to get. And ultimately, now we know, after the Meadowwood experience, that that's probably true. So to provide that alternative, to provide twenty percent affordable housing, is, we think is a really good way to go. a really good way to go.
Other comments, questions? During none, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions?
Thank you very much.
Motion. Please go. Thanks for watching us. Discussion on the subdivision for 46 Hill de Crest. Will you take the lead on that?
Mr. Chairman, very briefly, just recently, a developer came in to talk about a possible subdivision on Hill de Crest Drive. At your next meeting, you do have a public hearing set, but it's not, at this point, this is not a public hearing, this is just an informal discussion with the developer. They wanted to present two or three items that they thought would be of interest to you, that they wanted to get some clarification on, so you would, you'd be glad to go forward.
Good evening, Chair, Commission members. My name is Andrew Quirk, professional engineering principal with Kratz, Rosen, and Associates. I'm here this evening with Paul Meehan, T. Meehan, the applicant, as well as F. Rigno from Creative Land Development, and Joel Sebick, the owners here as well. As Hiram mentioned, we just wanted to sort of briefly introduce the subdivision and go over some of the key issues with the subdivision, get some feedback as we complete the design and prepare for the public hearing. Thank you again for allowing us to be on your agenda short notice. The, the property is, is 46 Hill de Crest Drive, located at the crest of Hill de Crest Drive. It's a 6.2 acre parcel located in the R40 zone. Sort of a crest in the center here, and it's the crest of Hill de Crest Drive. It's surrounded by residential development, Lawton Drive and Laurel Drive to the south and to the east. And these subdivisions, Hill de Crest was done in, I believe, 1952, Laurel Drive in 53, and Lawton in 63. So they've been, an area that's been developed for a while, residential area that's been developed. Presently, there's a house and some outbuildings, a drive, the house is served by a private well and public sewer, and there's a storm drainage system in Hill de Crest Drive. The proposal that we put together is for a five-lot subdivision with a town road, extension of the sanitary sewer, private wells to serve each of the homes, in connection to the storm drainage system near on Hill de Crest Drive. The, each of the lots meets the, your regulations, except for a couple of issues that we wanted to discuss. The, the first is that of the buildable area. Your regulations require that there be a 10,000 square foot area with an 80-foot minimum dimension per the zone. The parcel is such that the width of the existing parcel is such that we're four and a half feet short on the buildable area for lot five. What we've done, we looked at a number of different alternative designs to try and limit requesting such a waiver. What we felt at least was most prudent was to have these two lots here to the south meet the regulations, and then there's the 50-foot right away for the road, and then that would only be a waiver that we would be requesting on one lot, rather than the reverse and requesting waiver on two lots. We tried to minimize the number of lots, we worked to minimize the extent of the waiver. We also did provide additional area on that lot to sort of compensate for the fact that we're requesting a waiver of the buildable area dimension. We do meet the buildable area, just not the 80-foot dimension. It's, it's 4.5 feet short. So that was one point of discussion. The other is, we have proposed open space for the subdivision. We've posted by two means. One is dedicated open space at the entrance and a 30-foot perimeter conservation easement. Both of those would be in favor of a homeowners association that would be developed for the Murphy's Turn subdivision. There would be an association developed, and these two parcels would be deeded to the homeowners association, and the conservation easement would be in favor of the, of the association. It serves several purposes. First, beginning with the 30-foot perimeter conservation easement, again, the area's been developed for some time, there's existing homes that are there. This perimeter buffer, we felt, would provide a lot of benefit to buffering between this new development and existing homes that are there. It is a, as you can see, it is a wooded parcel, so there are trees around the perimeter and some stone walls and features that would be a benefit to preserve through this conservation easement. And by developing homeowners association for the protection of that, it does benefit all of the lots, and there's some collective benefit to that perimeter open space. The entrance open space, the deeded sections there, we went to have those deeded rather than an easement for several reasons. One is it maintains the parcels in terms of conforming with the regulations, it provides an area for streetscape improvements. The applicant would like to have some entrance decorative signs. There is a little bit of a slope that comes up from Hill de Crest, he'd like to put a wall and put an entrance sign indicating the subdivision, and on that wall have, have the Murphy's Turn name, and that would be something that would be a collective benefit to those in the subdivision. It also is a way to maintain the streetscape that's there without having to change on that existing streetscape to some extent there by that preservation. Also, there's a sewer easement here, rather than have that being encumbered in some individual lot, having that within something that's collectively held by the homeowners association, excuse me, we thought was a better arrangement. The, the two deeded sections total 1.18 acres, and then the perimeter conservation easement is 1.2 acres, collectively 1.4 acres, or 22% of the subdivision. Those are just some of the main points. Obviously, we'll go through this in more detail for the public hearing. I would like to, I guess, get some feedback from the commission on the subdivision as a whole and some of those issues. Also, if there's any questions for the applicant, we see her as well.
Okay. Procedural question, Hiram. I think this is the first informal we've had in quite a while. We're okay to pretty much ask any questions?
You can ask any questions, and you're not bound by your questions or your answers. You probably ought not to say we don't or we hate it, but you probably ask whatever questions you want, you're not bound by it, nor is the applicant bound by it either one. So it's a, it's a trusting situation, try to do that, so.
That's what I was hoping to hear. Okay.
That's the rest actually.
The fire marshal plus the cul-de-sac?
Not formally yet, no, no. But we will, we are working with the fire department as well as the sewer department as well, so that's in progress.
Couple of questions. What's the average lot size for each of the five properties?
The, the front three lots are between 40,000 and 45,000, and then the, the two last lots are between 50,000 and 55,000 square feet, so.
My second question, all the surrounding homes, everyone is on well water? You mentioned well for these potential homes.
Hill de Crest is on well, Laurel Drive is on well, and I believe Lawton is on water, public water.
Thank you.
Just to make, make it clear, you know, that we have new subdivision regulations that were effective November 15th, 2012.
Yes, so we've met several times with town staff, they've been very helpful with the development of this.
In the deeded open space or the easement, are there any steep slopes?
No, I don't believe, I'll confirm that, but I don't believe any of the property meant the steep slope requirement. It is a rounded crested area on a knoll, if you will, but I don't believe there were any slopes in the property that.
Any flatlands?
No. And we have submitted a letter, and Howard Beach is reviewing that to make a determination that does not go to the conservation.
Any other thoughts, comments, questions?
I got, can you ask me? So the question, I guess, that was asked, I think that Andrew asked, had to do with the square rectangle, whether being able to fit a lot. You did see that at a, at a recent subdivision on Sand Hill, where there was a reason to do so. Whether that turns out to be something you decide you want to do or not, that's really one of his questions. And the other one here, and I want to be really clear with everybody, there's, there's open space here that's proposed here. And town attorney Howard and I met with the applicant a few days ago, and we decided that, at least we, we decided that our recommendation's going to be that this probably not be town open space. Doesn't really make any sense for us. There are some implications for the applicant, and the applicant has decided that, as far as I know anyway, will probably include those as part of some sort of either association, or they may in fact deed those to the individual lots. There, there are probably reasons for that. But the biggest thing, and I just want to be clear with everybody too, is that what happens is these are, these are not corner lots anymore because of these open spaces. And so what happens is their legal frontage is obtained on the road that's put in, and that's important. I just want to be really clear with folks, that's, that's the way it's designed. Designed that way on purpose. We heard tonight about the sign there, the sewer easement that's there, so those are some reasons why it was designed the way it was. So you need to just take a look at that before the hearing, but if you have any other major questions on it, whether it's tonight or whether it's sometime before the public hearing, let me know and I'll pass this back to the applicant.
So potentially, the care of that property would be the responsibility of the key of the homeowners, or how?
Could be the homeowners association, which we did in Eric Olene off of West, or it could be deeded to the individual property owners themselves, and I'm not sure if we decided how, how you want to run that.
Paul Meehan, the applicant. We would prefer that the homeowners association take care of, own their property. I've had experience with three different subdivisions now where it put together HOAs, and they've been working quite well with maintaining the front streetscape, and that's what we're after.
Okay, thank you.
It's relatively straightforward with those, with those two things that I think you mentioned, so just, just wanted to give you a sort of preview, so that next time there's a public hearing, ask whatever questions.
The addressing, the issues that have been raised will definitely, maybe not speed up the process, but at least make it flow a lot better, as opposed to having to wait to get those answers.
Right. It's not a mission just for, what's the square footage of a house? How is, is that finalized, the square footage?
Well, we haven't finalized anything as far as the marketing goes, but currently, you know, we're looking at homes between 3,000 and 4,000 square feet, something a little bit smaller than we've been building typically in Farmington Valley. That's what the market is.
Not 8,000 square feet or?
No. The bus left the station.
It's a big market for those right now. Yeah, selling, not buying.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I don't have any other questions. Any other commission members have any questions?
We have posted the design, and I guess we're preparing for the hearing on the ninth.
Great. Look forward to.
Well, thanks again for the short notice and letting us come up.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Ira will trust you to come up with anything new for that public hearing when that comes in.
It's probably a good idea to do something like that, whether it's eight weeks before or two weeks before, whatever, just to give you an idea of what's coming, and think about whatever questions might come up as you go over the regulations and things, and just, that's good.
Okay. Let's see, next item on our agenda is the CROG Regional Planning Committee. Received some notices from them. Rich, I don't know if you were able to make that last meeting?
I did make that meeting. It was a good meeting, you are now federal.
Sure, okay.
So they've been working on updating their Plan on Conservation and Development. They plan on having a draft ready for June and working on the formatting throughout the summer, and then presenting to the public in the fall. Into that plan, they've incorporated natural hazard mitigation, including floodplain study, sustainable capital region plan, and a transit-oriented development plan that they've been developing there. It, it's quite, quite extensive. If any of you can make the meetings, I would really recommend it. There's a lot of give and take there. They specifically talked about a couple of items in that plan. One was the watershed chapter that they have in there, and how they're modifying because of the Yukon need for water. So they were talking about how they basically discourage inter-basin transfers of water. So there's a whole lot of things happening with that right now, coming and going, constantly changing. They talked about their economic development chapter, specifically on workforce development, education needed for workers, skill sets versus employer needs, and how do you, how do you break up all the different sets of people that are there, what everybody needs, proper funding of CSU, the technical schools, and the community colleges, developing good transit situations through the TOD. And then they included revitalizing Hartford in that, but I assume that's going to be in every presentation that they make there. As far as transportation goes, they were talking about the New Haven-Hartford-Springfield line, how they want to do more frequent trains, 45-minute intervals, and developing more stations along the way, so they have better connectivity between here all the way down to New York and further down. It's not like it used to be, the trains are much, much more effective now than they used to be before. I've used them several times in getting from Windsor all the way down to DC, and the plan is really making a difference in how easy it is now. They also talked about other regional opportunities for transportation, mainly the New Britain thing that's going on now with the new bus line coming for that. They talked about the different projects going on in different towns, which was sort of a real eye-opener. Bolton is looking at solar panel rules, something if we're going to push alternative energies in town, you might want to think about what kind of rules you want to set on solar panels that are on the ground. The ones on the roofs are easy, there's nothing much to do for those, but apparently there's, Bolton's starting to have an issue between owners and the sizes of the panels that are going in, how close they are, and how ugly they can be. So something to think about if we start pushing. Windsor, of all places, is, has 4,000 units to be built, which I couldn't believe, but I made him repeat the number. So I, I don't know where they're going to get 4,000 families to move in there. I don't see that kind of development, you know, business development going on to bring in that many.
Actually, I, I disagree with that statement.
Really?
There was a ton of development at Windsor.
Yeah.
They're building a lot of warehouses and stuff like that, I'm seeing.
It'll pick up that many people?
I, so I think that's, that's a lot, there's a lot of development in Windsor on the commercial side.
Okay. Well, I'm wrong.
Yeah.
Hopefully, they can fill it all. And then Manchester's building 240 units in three-story walk-ups, which we haven't seen in many years. And you can really explain why they went to three-story walk-ups, but given the aging population, I don't know how you do a long term.
I would think it would have to do a lot with just cost.
Yeah.
An extra floor, you've already got most of your dollars already spent. I don't know for sure.
They also went into, they developed a website, the Capital Region Green Clearing House. It's greenregionct.org if you want to go visit it. It's not public yet, but what it basically is, is a clearinghouse of resources for towns to use when they're planning and developing and doing all that sort of stuff. They basically included YouTube videos in there to explain different facets, facets of things. It's a little bit limited right now, but they'll be expanding that going forward. Like I said, that was a, it was a pretty interesting meeting, I was surprised, everything that's going on there. They have a special meeting set for April 25th and a regular meeting for May 16th. They're trying to get most of the work on the plan done at those two meetings, so that they can sort of finalize what they have in June.
Great, anything else?
No, that was it. And I did notice that at this meeting, we have some, they sent out some materials requesting assignment of people to the committee.
Yeah, I was going to bring that up. We have a couple of letters from them, one which has, didn't have the special meeting date of April 25th, but it did have their meeting dates for the rest of the year, which was May 16th, September 18th, and November 21st. But they're also asking us to designate. But they're also asking us to designate a representative and an alternate pleasure for this. Historically, the planning commission has basically alternated the person that did this. If I remember correctly, these are typically on Thursday nights?
Yes. Say, third Thursday every month, every other month.
I can take it easy, I'll take a special meeting for someone else who's involved in that.
Yeah, pick up and see about the, do we want to, what are the commissioners' thoughts about how to handle this? Do we want to have one person that goes to all the meetings? I think it's a lot of burden on them. On the other hand, you have one person reporting back. But what are your thoughts on that?
From what I saw in the work that they're doing, it's sort of like if we had alternate people showing up while we were trying to develop that whole plan before, I'm not sure that it would be really helpful. I think maybe having the same person go most of the time, or split up the year in halves or something, might be more beneficial to the overall group in getting the work done at the meeting. Because otherwise, one week, one month, I'll have the work and do it, and then I'll pass it on to Bill or something who's got to figure out what I was doing, and then try to take it further. So it just seems disruptive to do it that way.
That's a very good point. Well, we have the April meeting covered, so maybe what we do is think about it, and then our next meeting we'll have some more discussions on it. I think that's a very good point to get. Up to speed on this would be very tough.
I could check my calendar for May, September, and November to see if I can add to those.
And maybe other people can join for it.
Just to follow up to what Rich said, I went to the Northeast Transit Conference today, and the governor talked for a good half hour about economic development, all transportation, but the importance, you know, the new cars, the busway, getting to and from the airport, and the airport itself, and just, you know, I mean, he's really behind it. And it's just, as long as he's there, I think he's just going to continue to push that, and allocate funds, so, whatever the risk.
Yes. Okay. Rich, thank you for attending. You know, we're planning for the 25th, and everyone can think about it. I believe all these documents are on the website, so everyone will have to take a look at and see what works for everybody.
Just a couple of quick things, too, that have been involved with staff that have been going to some privatee's. I got a sizable, sustainable communities grant a few years, a couple of years ago. And one of the things that they're working on, they have consultants, actually Clarion Associates out of this particular section of their office is on Florida, but they're all over the country. And Clarion's working on sustainable land use development regulations, they're working on regulations for live work units, they're working on solar regulations as well, that made some of the discussion that they did the other night. There are a number of other, I think agricultural sustainability was another one that people were very interested in, as well as accessory apartments, and how to create those as well. So therefore, it's a sort of sustainable areas that they're looking at. And as soon as those regulations are finalized, I'll get those out to you as well. Very interesting stuff. And the sustainability, obviously, is, people all over the country are worried about it, but how we can fit that into our regulations if we should decide to do that, if the town should decide to do that, will be very interesting. So I'll get those out to you as soon as they're finalized as well. The crowd's working hard in that as well.
Great, thank you. Okay, that takes care of that agenda item. For C is discussion on subdivision approval extensions, i.e. subdivision regulations. I believe what this is, is back to our, certainly back to our discussion last week, which, if that is the factor, then I think we're, we got enough explanations from Town Attorney and Ira, where we don't need to go back and redo our subdivision regulations. Is that, am I interpreting that correctly?
Yeah, I think that's certainly correct. Like I spoke to Bob about that, he agrees. And I think the fact that, the reason, one of the reasons that it's important is that the legislature, every time it meets, can do something, and changing the regulations periodically is not something we want to necessarily get into as well. So we'll just rely on whatever the statute that's in place and in effect at that time says, and go by that. I think that's the important way to do it. So it's probably less of a mess if we don't make those changes every other year or something.
I think it would, my opinion would be that it would really make our regulations very chaotic to react to whatever they have done. General consensus and agreement with that.
Richie, you were the guy who brought up the point.
I can live with that, with a periodic update of the reg's intervals, that's fine. It doesn't all have to be done as it happens. You know, that's, yeah, that's fine.
And I think one thing that I could do to help that, I'll make sure that, whether it's myself or Howard who was here, says that if you're in the process of approving a subdivision, it's important to know at that time exactly how long you're approving it for. And that's something we should make sure that we tell you ahead of time, so you know what that final date is, so that when the chairman signs off on the map, and says that on, you know, March 26th, we approve the following, and the actual date is whatever, it's right in the title block. So that date we'll know ahead of time, and we'll tell you that ahead of time. So there's no confusion by the future.
That's a good point. Adding that to the title block would be a good idea. Okay, communications and administrative business?
Two quick things. One is, I think I gave you a little earlier this evening, a draft letter on a grant that we're actually applying for. The board selectmen allowed us to apply for a grant for trails down the Baker property. Some of you may be familiar with this map. This is a sort of a sketch map, and I would, I would try to look schematic, really. This is a performing arts center down this area here, the fields, of course. This plan was, the sketch was put together a couple of years ago, and what we had in mind at the time was creating some sort of a path that went around the entire Baker property, and then somehow looped back toward the performing arts center, and then back up through that area. We're in the process now of applying for that grant. We actually have to submit it on Thursday, and the staff has done a really good job of putting that together. We're hoping that, and then the trail is all we're applying for at this point in time, too. It's a recreational trail grant. It allows you to create and recover or renovate existing trails. And some of these, and if any of you have been back here, some of these areas used to be farmed, some of them still are farmed. Some areas that are quite easy to pass through, where there are old roadways, essentially old roadways. There are other areas down through this area here, where it's quite wet. And so that's going to require a little bit more work. So we've worked with Rich Switkowski to get a plan together to estimate how much the cost of creating that trail through that area as well would be. One of the things that the Public Works Director said is, that would make a really great opportunity for people that participate in like a 5K run. Without going down all the roads, and without closing streets, and having a lot of police involved, it would be, you know, start in one location, and because it's not quite 3.1 miles around, the finish line would probably be a little bit further down the road. But still, it would be a really great, you know, 5K course that could get people through this area, which is really, really quite nice, a lot of areas. And so what I did was prepared a letter that I hope you find acceptable to Lori Giannotti at the DEEP. And that letter basically talks about the trail, the fact that we acquired the Baker property a number of years ago, and the funding would allow us to construct non-motorized recreational trails, it's not for dirt bikes, RVs.
That's it.
If there's a need for that, let me know, but I don't want to write that one. In this area, it's shown that the grant application maps and documents show that it allowed for the maintenance and restoration of historic trails, I mentioned that. It's clear that the grant would provide an impetus for the establishment of newer educational programs, so that schools, you know, whatever schools, whether they're public schools or private schools, could take their kids down there and do some nature study. There's some really beautiful birding areas down through there. Howard and Lynn have been down there a number of times recently, and said it really is, really, it's like you really don't know you're that close to the center of town, it's really quite beautiful. The fact that the trail system is directly accessible from the center of town is really important as well. So we're hopeful that the DEEP will fund this, but we're also hopeful that you'd supply a letter of support for the grant application. So I'm going to ask the zoning commission for the same thing. Conservation Commission has agreed to the same thing. CROG has agreed to it as well. Part of the River Water Shield Association has agreed to it. And so we think we're in pretty good shape with regard to support. Oh, we'd love to have the planning commission support for that as well.
Will the surface be a soft surface or macadam, or what would it be?
Probably not macadam, it's probably going to be maybe like a cinder trail, something like that.
That's great.
We don't want to pave it, it's just, you know, in case it does, it does flood, there's no question.
Won't start flooding.
So we want to make sure that, you know, if floodwaters rise up and they go down, the trail's still there, hopefully.
And this, Ira handed out a letter dated March 26th, 2013. I have been through that area, I think prior to the town buying it, but it is a very neat area back there, and very exceptional. Definitely see a trail through there, whether it's some kind of a off-road trail or something to that effect, just going back there, you never know, you're within a quarter, half a mile of the center of town.
Yeah. Fire Marshal, the only question he had was whether emergency vehicle could get back there in case someone got hurt. He said, yeah, that we think that that's a reasonable. So that's roughly the width that we would try to.
As long as we don't have to line it so that there's a left side and a right side. That'll be later. Commission members, thoughts, comments?
I like the idea. It is pretty airy down there.
Sure. I think it's a really good use of resources right now, unavailable.
I like it as well. How does the potential sighting of a senior center there affect it?
Doesn't matter. No effect. Be a great place for them to walk, you know, sure they decide to walk there, whether, no matter where it's located, frankly. You know, right down, getting access to that area now is a bit tricky. So the way the trail ultimately runs is down next to the, next to the sewage treatment plant, not through that yard, but there's a fence there, obviously, but next to that plant. This photograph, this is a great photograph that we had done a while ago, went down through there, coming in through where the sewage treatment plant is, and then getting back up to where the trail is. So, great resource for anybody that wants to walk.
I'd love to see us do a positive vote on this motion to approve it, a letter similar to what's here. I think Ira's pretty much hit all the high points, other than putting in some dates. I mean, you approved it. Do I have a motion? First. Gary. Second.
Second.
Comments, questions?
Totally positive.
Yeah? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Extentions? The ayes have? I'm assuming you'd like me to sign something tonight, Ira?
If you want to sign out, I might go ahead and add a bit.
Here, I can do that.
Thank you.
Before I go on. Do you have any other business, Ira?
Two quick things. One is a stormwater policy I gave you a while ago, remember? I don't know if you're in position tonight, you know, it is a little bit early, but if you take a look at that, and just see, maybe next meeting, we could take a more discussion on that and go on. Again, the zoning commission approved that the other day as their policy, they adopted that as their policy. It references the stormwater design regulations, but we don't have it adopted as a regulation yet. So the way we're using this is we suggest to, for example, developers that come in, this is the stormwater guideline that you need to go by, and they've been very good about that. So if we adopt it as a policy first, it'll give us some time to work out the kinks in the regulation, so that they can then ultimately use it as part of the regulations. So I'm hopeful that, perhaps at your next meeting, take a look at that if you would, please, and see if it's anything being there that's either unclear or you're uncomfortable with, and let me know. I'd like to get it adopted if we could, sometime soon.
Yeah, why don't we, we'll make sure we put that out for our next meeting, and we can discuss that, vote on it.
The last thing that I have is that two stalwart individuals from this commission went to the Connecticut Bar Association meeting in Middletown, it was last Saturday. And there was, first discussion, I think, of the day was on planning commissions. And so there's information that was given to everybody, there's a large booklet that came out, and I didn't copy it all because it's not all necessarily applicable. It's an interesting read, if you want, but I wanted to give you copies of the planning section if you wanted to. I thought the information was pretty good, and for, and Tom, maybe you want to talk a little bit about it? If you do, fine. I thought it was a good day anyway.
Comments?
First. I think Bob and I here was excellent. The speakers were, nobody's all asleep.
Yeah, they were engaged.
Except Ira. We kept looking back at Ira.
And Howard, Howard was here, too.
Everybody, it was, believe it or not, with this much material, it was really invigorating. I have my book, if someone wants to borrow my book, I marked everything they highlighted, but it's, the zoning part was, I mean, the planning obviously was direct application to us, but the zoning part and conservation and everything, all the sections were great, very well. It went from basically 8:00 to 4:30, strangely, with a sharp break for lunch. But they used PowerPoints, and they were entertaining and informative.
Thank you. Bob? Very informative, especially for someone who hasn't been involved with this as long as some folks have. But it was very informative and very engaging. Took away a lot of information.
A lot of court cases, which are cited in the book, about how we get to where we are with various, you know, decisions, so it was fascinating.
Good, that was good. I suggest there were two sessions. There was a session on Woodstoves, and there was a session on, what's called the Lupa, which is the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act.
Yeah.
And I thought that, you know, I mean, while individually, some folks might have thought that was interesting, I thought that they could probably done away with that hour and a lot more questions, because I think people didn't get a chance enough to answer questions. And so I suggested that to them, and they said that they had heard, they felt the same thing. So whether next time if people go to what we hear about Woodstoves or not, I don't know, but I think that commissioners need to have a chance to answer questions, and I think those that did get the chance to answer, hopefully it was helpful to that part, so.
Good.
A good day, and it didn't smell on, see, the good.
That's a great point. Did you have anything else, Ira?
I think I have none.
Okay. I was asked, the first electman, I'm assuming through the board of electmen, but nonetheless, the first electman is reconvening what was the charrette subcommittee to deal with what the use of the Hartford Insurance property will be. And the people that are going to be on that will be the Board of Finance Chairman, or is designated, the zoning commission chairman, or is designated, the planning commission chairman, or is designated, or they're designated, excuse me, chairman of the Economic Development Commission, or designated, chairman of Design Review, or designated, and the chairman of the Conservation Inland Wetlands, or designated. So, obviously, you said yes for us. So I'll attend at least the first meeting to see where this is going, and then bring it back to the commission and give you everyone regular updates. I think potentially this, we may end up seeing another charrette for the, I'll call it the southern end of town, whether it's Hartford Insurance or the whole southern end, but looking at that will end. As a person that came into the center of town charrette with a little skepticism, I walked away with a much better appreciation of what came out of that, was personally very impressed. But we'll see where this goes, and hopefully the town can come out of this better than we're going into it. That's the intention anyways. Anything to add to that, Ira?
I think the first meeting is set for April 4th.
Yeah.
I think it's, I think it's five o'clock, April 4th.
Yeah, I have a feeling it's going to be five.
I think that the way this is set up before is that there were, even though there were eight or 10 people around the table, there's certainly plenty of room for folks to watch and zoom. It's not a closed process whatsoever. I think an exciting process, and I've said from day one, as far as I'm concerned, that I think we're going to make lemonade out of lemons. I really think that's where the process is going, so I feel very comfortable with that. I hope we're right, but we'll see what happens, so.
Considering where we started with the center of town charrette, I was, I'm still blown away with where we ended up, and how involved everyone was, I was very, very impressed.
I just, I just think as long as people are willing to be positive and constructive, that we can accomplish. that we can accomplish almost anything.
Very good. Okay. Almost our last item, minutes from our March twelfth meeting.
Are you in the planning commission reading minutes for March twelfth, 2013? Do we have any changes on page one?
Yes. Line eleven. Ira isn't there, it's Howard. I know they both look alike.
A little less facial there.
Yeah, a little less.
So you want to change that to Howard Beach?
Yes.
Any other changes for page one? Page two? Page three? Page four? Page five? Okay. Very well for your changes. I'd like to make a motion to approve the planning commission minutes for March twelfth, 2013. Leave a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain because I was not here.
Okay, and now the dilemma that I thought we would face, but thank goodness we have it for ourselves. Mr. Jansen?
I'm in with Jerome, and I apologize for being late.
Remember just worried we couldn't get off the phone to be able to go home.
Yeah, we thought I might be here all night.
Funding for Simsbury Community Television is provided in part by contributions from viewers like you. Thank you.